One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please, Elizabeth.
Yes. Deputy Mayor McFadden?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw? Absent. Trustee Gluck?
Present.
Trustee Casker?
Present.
And Trustee McHugh?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. So how's everyone doing this evening? Good. Beautiful day today. Gosh, I wish I had the chance to get out more, although we did have some rain. Really excited to be here today and about to open the public hearing on the budget. The entire team has worked very, very hard on this. We've done quite a deep dive this year and are very excited about it. And we're under the cap as it stands right now, which is also a terrific accomplishment, especially since of all of our infrastructure challenges. So with that, why don't I move to open the public hearing, the 2021-2022 tentative budget at 6:01 PM. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So John, do you mind pulling up the tentative budget? Starting on revenue general. And I'm going to open the floor and try and couch your comments into a comment rather than a question if you can. But of course, we'll show some flexibility in answering what we can without getting into a long dialogue with any individual. And you have to take two, three minutes, I think is appropriate. Who cares to start?
Mayor, this is Claudio. If nobody else wants to start, I can kick it off.
No problem. Just identify your address, please.
Claudio Guazzoni, East Summit Road. I just wanted to make a small suggestion. We do charge a management fee to the water company of $1,000 a month. That management fee was instituted in 2015. And it's been $1,000 a month since 2015. Maybe if you bump it up, I think you might have some room to $1,500 or $1,700 a month is probably where it could go right now.
Okay, so which one is that, please?
That's the general fund.
General fund. And now, do we have that? John, can you pull that line item up?
It's line item 5031.
5031. What do you think, Alan?
I think, you know, I think Claudio's got a valid, a valid point there. It's never, never been adjusted. I believe, well, Claudio, you and Mary and Joe instituted that.
Along with yourself, Alan.
Yeah. So I, I think, you know, it's a fair argument to say there has been inflation as wages, raw materials and everything have gone up in terms of vehicles and everything. So I actually would say that's very constructive and would tend to agree. Question is, what's inflation over the last six years? And then we adjusted accordingly.
Right. So you were thinking 1,500, Claudia?
I was thinking 1,500. We purposely put it very low in 2015. You know, I, I kind, I, I think 15 or 1,700 a month is just fully justified.
All right. So what we'll do, how about this, guys? We will, and we will, we'll take that under consideration. Looks like we have, I haven't asked the other trustees, but it looks like we were serious, we would seriously consider raising it, match it certainly with inflation. All right, thanks. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Jim Hayes.
Hi, Jim. How are you? Please state your address as well.
Fork Cliff Road. And I just had a question about the water management and, and if you had decided on what you were doing and what you were spending on management of raising water milfoil in Tuxedo Lake.
Okay, so we
That's in the water budget, I guess, but
It is in the water budget and we can go to that, but you know, we literally just got AJ's recommendations yesterday. I think it was yesterday. So I thought we'd talk about that tonight. I do have it on the agenda under discussion in new business. And then I think that based on the feedback we'll get, we can come back and make adjustments to the budget if necessary.
All right.
I did send you a copy, Jim, so
Yes, I did. I got it.
You'll have, you'll have some comments potentially. And the rest of the board, everyone's comfortable with doing that?
Yes, for me.
Okay. Alan and Tink, if you're on yet, and Chris?
Yes, for me.
Okay, great.
I mean, I guess my only comment would be subject to nobody having any other questions. There might be a fruitful discussion to have with Jim participating.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, we could do that, too. So why don't we wait till the end of the public hearing if there's more questions? If not, we can go back to Jim and either do it at the scheduled time on the agenda or, or now. It wouldn't matter to me either way. So let's see if there's other questions.
Hi. Oh, sorry. Shall I go?
Yes, please.
Name and address, please.
It's Elizabeth Cottnor, WeWah, intention.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Good, good, good.
Good. I just have a comment on the lakes management line. I noticed that the two previous years, 19 to 20 and 20 to 21, $100,000 was allocated, yet only 64 were used, 64,000 were used on the, on the 19 to 20 year and only 20 grand this past budget. So knowing how maybe desperate the situation is with the invasives in all the three water bodies, I'm thinking if we're allocating those funds, that we should make every effort to use them.
Yeah, no, I agree. And that goes for quite a few variety of issues that we've noticed this year, roads, for example. Yeah, I agree with you. Some of the reports and recommendations from AJ were delayed. In fact, we don't have the current one. So I think there's, there's some issue there that we hope to address this year. And I believe that we, we were fortunate enough to get Dash. Last year, trustee Gluck was able to get Dash to come and do work. And I believe you also chipped in and had them do something around your place. So that worked out well. This year, we decided to be a little more proactive and at least up to 10 days potentially in the WeWah. Again, I believe that Paul may have the more updated answer, but I know that we've reached out to Dash. Is that correct, Paul?
That's correct. And I confirmed today and tried to chase them down for their, for their contract. So they will be available for, I believe, nine days, might be 10 days. I can't recall how we fine tuned it for a combination of both the early, early summer and fall for the, for the WeWah.
Great. So, yeah, go ahead, please.
Just saying, that's great news and I appreciate it.
Yeah, it just, just for clarity's sake, I believe that concludes pond number three, too, doesn't it? I think the approval was
Yes.
Spot treatment of pond number three post Priscillacore. And then obviously, WeWah highlighted spots that AJ had found.
Correct. And then this evening, when we, when we hit on AJ's current current recommendations, we can have a discussion about what else we want to include and see if it matches up with our budget. And if necessary, make adjustments. Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else?
I think Sally has her hand raised.
Oh.
And address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and address, please.
Yes, well, I did look at the budget and I have a few comments. One was I noticed that the payment in lieu of taxes, which I'm assuming that's from the Tuxedo Park School, has been the same for many years. And if we look back, it never changes. And I, I guess that is the, their sewer usage, which probably doesn't change. But our taxes go up. I think the school uses more than sewer of, of the village resources. And perhaps you should renegotiate. I mean, it's obviously you, they aren't taxed by the formula that the rest of us are. But I think it would be something that you could, could renegotiate and, and we could get some more payment in lieu of taxes from the
Yes, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
I had, I had two other sort of things.
Can I address? Let's just do one at a time?
Oh, sure.
And then I'll let you continue. Yeah, Paul and I discussed that today. And I'll ask also John to chime in as to what else is included besides sewer, if anything. They have an agreement that has a evergreen clause. And we're going to check the date. We're going to see if it already passed or whether we have the opportunity to negotiate with them. But very much like Claudio's suggestion, I think, I think there is room to do that. And I think it is justified to do that. I don't know if we're on the right cycle, but Paul, you and I were going to check that after the meeting.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Sally, what else do you have?
Well, I also noticed that we have quite an increase in the legal fees that we're paying and also the insurance costs. And I did ask about it and was told that this is mainly due because we have lawsuits. And these are lawsuits of village residents against the village. And it's against the village. And basically, as I understand it, in great part, maybe not everyone, but board decisions, decisions of the BCA or the zoning, what the planning board. And people feel their property rights have been, not been recognized. And I, I just was wondering if maybe we could, I mean, this costs us a lot. I mean, this, these were two, two rather large increases. And that the, maybe these boards should be more aware of property rights and not be quite so rigid and arbitrary in some of these decisions. I don't think people sue unless that's really a last resort. And they don't sue unless they think they're right and they're going to win. And in many cases, the village has to settle and the village has to pay money and pay extra for the legal. And I mean, this is something
Do you have a career as a defense attorney? I'm not going to comment as to whether or not the boards are being arbitrary. I do believe that they do the best they can. You cannot prevent someone from suing that's unhappy about a decision. But just for the clarity of the public, our insurance is going up 30% this year. We have commented on this in prior meetings. And it is, as Sally said, because of settlements, actually. And Sally, I must say also that sometimes a settlement is a good business decision. You know, whether you have a lawsuit that's frivolous or whatever the case might be, sometimes you settle these things rather than continuing to litigate. I can't go through, oh, it's the attorney run, I haven't speak to it. But you are correct, there has been a lot and the insurance is going up for that reason. And we have instructed Marshall and Sterling to shop for a new carrier for us. And I met a gentleman just recently who, who insures municipalities who I reached out to today. So hopefully before the budget is finalized, and I'm not sure that's possible, but sometime this year, we believe we're going to be able to save money by switching characters, but we don't know. But, but your point's well taken.
Well, of course, the best thing to do is to avoid the lawsuit.
Absolutely.
And, and I think that, I, I'm not sure that people really would, are engaging in frivolous lawsuits because, you know, it costs them money, too. And I think it's probably a last resort. But anyhow, that's just my opinion. And just one more quick thing.
Sure, please.
This, I just wondered about the tree advisory board. $1,500 is allocated and I, I didn't know, I don't know who's on the board or what they do, what, what is, what is the purpose of it? And is that payment necessary?
Thank you for raising that. Is anyone on the current board that has a history on that? Be it Alan or Paul, potentially? That was initially taking, I believe that was, or maybe even Claudio, you might have been on the board when that, that was initiated. The $1,500 payment to the tree board?
The payment's a function of per capita. It's a $2 per capita fee. So that, that's where that comes from and that's being part of Tree City USA. With regard to the costing of this, this is really something that the, it's, it's shared with the DPW, but this is an expense with regard to getting rid of Japanese knotweed, which is very invasive, has huge problems within our infrastructure. A lot of it's around the DPW and the WeWah Beach Club. And that, that was, Arawick's treatment is the costing, that line item was the costing this year for that.
Do we, do we still have the same amount to take out? In other words, do we, should we continue the payment?
I, I mean, my view is yes, because you, you could put it in a DPW expense, but I think optics and being part of Tree City USA, it's a little bit like your bee pollinator thing we're going to be discussing later on tonight. I think there, there are some merits to it. So I would be more inclined to include it, but being cognizant of where, where the expense and where the funds are being spent.
So you might suggest it go somewhere else, like under the DPW budget? But still back to the, it'll be in the general fund, though, right? Either way?
It'll be in the general fund irrespective. And right now, it's earmarked for something which allows us to be part of Tree City USA. If we elect not to be a member of Tree City USA, that $1,500 doesn't magically disappear because it's an annual treatment getting rid of this invasive.
Hmm, I see. Paul, do you have any thoughts on it?
I think Alan nailed it right, right on the head. It's an expense we would have anyway. But, but accounting for it this way allows us to be part of Tree City USA, which may provide some other opportunities to do other things. I'd also encourage everyone to take a look at the tree advisory board website. It's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a great resource and has a lot of very good information on it.
Okay. So you're saying by identifying it in a separate line item rather than in the, in the general fund gives us eligibility for the benefits of the Tree, Tree USA?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. And that, do they actually get to see our budget or do we include that when we apply or something?
We have to annually have an Arbor Day, which the tree advisory board hosts that reception down at the racetrack. And it's, it's a budget line item that you need in order to be a member of Tree City USA. So we, we achieve that along with taking care of an invasive.
Right. I know. I like it. I like it. So Sally, I hope that answers your question on that one.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Sally, your address, please?
My address?
Yeah. For the record, please.
207 West Lake Road.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else with a question?
Hey, it's Shell. Hi, I'm back.
Hi, Shell. How are you?
Good. I'm sorry. I was a little late. I don't know if you guys have covered this before, but I noticed there is a line item that's been blanked for the last few years for the cell tower rental fees.
Right.
And I wondered, is there, have, have there been discussions about us trying to, you know, to put up a cell tower? Because I know these rental fees are pretty hefty.
Right. Yeah, no, great question. So the history there is since there's been no activity in that line for two years, correct me if I'm wrong, board, but I believe we can now take that out. And it was put in there in case we were to do a cell tower. But the cell tower proposal that the board reviewed, that was presented to us by the Communications Committee, was located in an area that didn't go over well. And, and there was a group of residents that opposed it. And so what we've done now, moving forward, is we're looking at different technology other than a cell tower. And we put into the budget this year, money for a communications consultant. Now, I believe that committee member, new committee member, Maureen Cohn, recommended that person. I'm not sure if she's on the line. She's welcome to jump in. But we put money in, I believe, what was it, gang, 12 grand?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. So we, we put that in, Shell, because we want to look at other technologies. The cell tower was, was a placeholder. And I believe we can take that out because there's been no activity that, in that for two years. Is that correct, board? That's a yes. So Shell, does that answer your question?
Yes. I, I would love to, anything we could do to try to improve the cell service. So any, any way I can help, by all means.
Well, there was, it was a funny story. I was talking to someone about, that was opposed to the cell tower. And I was driving around the lake and in the middle, of course, I got cut off because there was no cell service. But anyway, yeah, it would have been about, I don't know, it was 12 or $14,000 a year in rent. But it just, there doesn't seem to be the, the will to do that. Hopefully, we'll find something else in a newer technology that doesn't have the visual problems. And the fact that some neighbors did not want it to be near their homes for safety reasons. So right now, that's, that's down, down the food chain. But thank you for bringing that up. And your address, please?
Maureen Cohn.
Thank you. And, okay, any other questions? Maureen, are you on? Okay. What time do we have, gang? Let me see. It's 6:22. We have until seven to receive questions, including those that come late. So we're going to be keeping this open to fill the time, as you suggested. Trustee McHugh, you, do you want to start a conversation about the lakes?
Sorry. Barring anybody else having anything to say, might, might be fruitful to have a discussion of the lakes, AJ's recommendation.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. And then, and then we'll just hold on any more questions till after that. That's not going to take the next 40 minutes.
I hate to
Oh.
Hate to raise this, but I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable doing that because we have that as a, you know, agenda item for a regular meeting at seven. So
Yeah. So you want, you think people will miss out on that if they come in at seven expecting to hear it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand your point. Well, we could certainly take public comment on it from Jim and potentially save some time. It is on the budget. And it is a line item. And I think, I, I mean, I'd be happy to hear Jim's comments. And if that's okay with the board, if not, I'm happy to hold it until the regular meeting.
I personally, I think it's up to Jim if he wants a, a greater audience or not, or he's happy starting the dialogue now. And obviously, we can continue it post 7 o'clock.
Right. And we could always give an update of what took place.
Yeah, I'm really, my comments are questions. I did not understand from AJ's proposal, what he specifically planned to, was proposing to do in Tuxedo Lake. There was no dollar value put in. Was it a whole lake treatment, partial lake treatment? What is it? It wasn't clear to me. Did I miss something?
Alan, please.
Yep, sorry. I, I had identical thoughts, Jim. It, it didn't seem like there was any, any granularity. It was a, a kind of sweeping statement with no, no recommendations or phased in approach as far as I could see.
Right.
Paul, what were your thoughts?
What they said. Yes.
Chris and Tink, do you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I'm actually, I have pulled up right now. I'm trying to do the math to figure out if, if he has like, I don't know, somehow a way to figure out number of days versus cost, but it's clearly not there.
Right. That, that, that's, okay. Yeah, I think that in that case, we probably should have further conversation at seven and potentially table it until we get more data. We obviously, in terms of the public that's listening, we, the board would have gone back to our lake manager and asked for more detail, but this literally came in yesterday, I think, or the day before. But, you know, we were well, well involved in the budgeting process and haven't had time to go back to him.
I would just add one thing, Mac, and that is that I would underline what Elizabeth Cottnor said in terms of ample time in WeWah with the dash and, and in pond three. Now, I also didn't understand from AJ's proposal that Priscillacore was being proposed for pond three, is it?
I, I have had inter, interchanges with him and mentioned things and asked questions like, should we do it again in pond three or should we do, you know, et cetera? Should we do it in Tuxedo Lake? And if so, unlimited basis, I think I mentioned that to you. I'm not sure if, if he's taking that as instruction. I would hope not.
Well, maybe I misunderstood. I mean, he, he said to do dash harvesting there in case there's regrowth after the Priscillacore, but he may be talking about the Priscillacore from last year.
Oh.
Not from this year.
Jim, that was my, my assumption, which might have been totally wrong, but I think he was basically saying Priscillacore treatment upon three was a success. And now what, and you know, we'd done it as a kind of beta test. And now we'll use dash harvesting since we've got it under control and not use chemicals. That, that was my understanding of what, what he was referencing, both to the WeWah and to pond number three. So hopefully I'm not mistaken.
Right. Yeah, no, that, that's a great point. I mean, and that would be great if that's, if that's what he say. That would work well for us. We'd save on Priscillacore treatment in, in both, in pond three. Did we, we didn't do Priscillacore in WeWah, did we?
No.
No.
I don't think so. And how, I mean, just from, Jim, I don't know if you've seen it or any of the trustees, has anyone looked at, at the end of last year, how did we stand on, on milfoil in WeWah? Were we in good shape after the dash?
I don't think there was another survey, was there, after the dash?
Well, if it was ordered in the last budget year, yes.
Yeah, it, there was, it was meant to be.
Yeah. Now, we haven't seen it, right, Alan?
Not that I know of. I
No, we, we haven't seen it. We, yeah, that, that, that's something that we need to address as a board. But in terms of this public hearing, I think we concluded that discussion. In terms of the public hearing today, we had, we are debating a line item for lake management, which includes the lake manager's fees, treatments of the milfoil. And there's several ways to skin that cat. One is using Priscillacore, which is a treatment. Another is using divers to pull. We've done both in the past on pond three. We've done dash, the pulling, the divers pulling on WeWah and Tuxedo Lake. And now what we're discussing is what recommendations is our lake manager making for us moving forward for this budget year? And so we're going to have to put that discussion off, I think, until we get further clarification from the lake manager, AJ. And in terms of how the process works, everyone that's listening, we're going to be closing the public hearing tonight because we're required to do that. And then we have to do a final budget vote. I believe it's May first. I'm not sure, but I think it's in that range. And so there'll be additional changes. And any additional changes that we make, I commit to distributing them into the public domain. And, you know, you're welcome to comment on, on them at a, at a comment period in the future. But nothing will be major. And so I think that brings us to the end of that discussion, unless Jim or the trustees have any additional comments they want to make on the lake management line item?
No, I don't. But I would like to comment on something we discussed before, or at least I proposed in the prior public hearing. And, and Mac, you and I had some email about it, and that is any kind of line item for the watershed.
Right. So that, that, that's a great question. So I don't recall if we put the, what was it? 1,500 you requested, Jim?
That was, that was, you know, the minimum, but, but you
Right.
If you cut the water quality budget, AJ's water quality budget that you transfer funds into the watershed, but I don't
Yes, I would like to do that. I, you know, and, and what Jim and I discussed, members of the board, was that, you know, at the end of the process, AJ's firm does testing and so forth of, of the success of what we've done. And I could see that money going into a line item for the GIS survey that we approached Weston and Sampson about, you know, locating all the different parts of our infrastructure, what, what needs to be repaired, what flows into the lake. And to me, putting money there to identify the problems and then repairing the problems is very valuable. And then we would follow up with studies of the water and tests of the water by AJ to see if, how successful we were. So, to that end, Jim, what we did is the board contacted Weston and Sampson, and they wanted to know if we want, we wanted them to price something out. And the answer was yes, and we haven't had that, we haven't had that number back. I don't know what it's going to be, but it would involve surveying all of our water system and then putting it on to, putting that data into a geographic information systems study, which is a computer-based study that can be accessed by multiple people. And, and then determining from that what items to tackle first, based on obviously, what are the biggest, where are the biggest problems in our sewer that's, that's going into the lit, into the main lake? So, at this point, Jim, we don't have a price back from Weston and Sampson. And so, this is an item that's going to be resolved probably in the next couple of weeks before the final budget. And I would propose that the board discuss it if necessary in a special meeting and make a determination whether or not we want to dedicate some funds for that, including funds that may not be taken from the water management line, the lake management line. There could be additional funds. But before I'm committing here, I'd like to ask the, the trustees if they have any comments on, on what I just said.
I have, I have one. I just want to clarify, we're talking stormwater, not sewer. Mary, you have a...
That's correct.
The whole thing, but you said sewer. I want people to know, we're not talking about sewer.
Let's, let's, let's go back on the tape and, and voice over all of those, all those sewers put in there with waste. What is it?
Stormwater. Stormwater.
Stormwater, thank you.
Stormwater, yes.
Stormwater. Okay, thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate that.
Yeah, just, just one comment, because I, a former trustee told me many years ago, maybe John Ledwith remembers this, or anybody else that's been around, that they tested the stormwater to see if, if the stormwater flowed into the sewer system, and they did that with dye. And that they did, they did prove that some stormwater goes into the sewer system. Does anybody have any recollection of that?
I think Alan, you can comment on that.
That, that, the answer is unquestionably yes. And I, I think the anecdotal is as good as anything else when we have hard rainstorms. And when you look at what goes through the sewer plant, that, that basically tells you that we do have a problem where there are cracks on a, and water is seeping into our, our sewer lines and going through the sewer plant. So, there, there's no question about that. And, you know, this three-phase project that we've been working on and spent, well, $550,000, $600,000, and will unfortunately have to continue the expense, subject to what Weston Sampson, once they've done their flow analysis test, this is going to be an ongoing problem. But there's no question that is the case.
So, it's because of the, it's not piped directly to the sewer system. It's just leaking through the pipes.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think John Ledwith can answer it with regard to homeowners, you know, going downspouts and everything into the sewer system. That, that whole issue's been resolved and tested. It's more where you've got, you know, old, old pipes where there's just seepage.
Okay.
Chris, if I can, there's actually two other issues. The issue with the smoke testing that was done years ago was to prove that people didn't have their gutters, you know, connected to the sewer system. And there were minimal problems that we found many years ago. What we're talking about now are some of the storm drains that are actually on the sides of the roads. We don't know if the storm drains at some point go into the sewer system. That section, that, that there has not been tested. We do know that some of the drains go right to the lake, so it's not the best circumstance, but at least it's not going to the sewer plant. But we do feel there are some catch basins on the sides of the roads that may be piped into the sewer system. And that's why we have this large influx of flow down at the sewer plant after we have heavy rains or heavy, or a quick thaw in the winter time.
Okay.
And it also allows, if someone has a fertilizer on their lawn that's up on a hill, and that water goes into the, into the storm drain, that could end up in the lake, too.
Yes.
And so, I think that this is a very important project for us. And I have no idea what the cost might be to put this information, to, to take this data and input it. And, and obviously, part of that process would be researching and investigating the particular location and where it goes. I don't know if it would include dye test. I have no idea what Weston and Sampson would propose, but I don't see this as a small number. I don't know, you know, what the trustees think, but I, I don't imagine this to be a small number.
Well, let me say, I think we all agree, we want the sewer going to the sewer system and the stormwater going to the, the lakes. And with stormwater to be clean and not full of fertilizer and other contaminants.
Right, exactly.
They, they all have their place, and the system just need to be closed to handle that.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to just add that if the basic locations of the catch basins can be determined either by Weston and Sampson or some, some other way, Orange County Soil and Water has volunteered at no cost to the village to place that data on a topographic map of, of the park, which would be very useful.
Oh, absolutely.
Mapping could be, would not need to be done by Weston and Sampson.
So, Jimmy, are you referring to the GIS system that Orange County has on their website?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that with tax information and property lines. Oh, yeah, that would be, that would be ideal.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it would be a topographic map, because you want what, you know, what area of the park is being drained into what catch base.
Yeah, and, and in fact, maybe we could simply send the existing GIS mapping that we have already of all of our sewer and water supply and, and lines and include that in, in the, in the Orange County map itself. That would be great.
That's another possibility, yes.
Yeah, and I've actually been looking into that for our police and fire department and EMS. I mean, you, you know, we could have information there that would be very helpful for first responders as well, because it's all a matter of entering data into the geographic information system database. I mean, you could have a home, you could even have the floor plan, you could have pets. It's unlimited what you can do. And it should be on everyone's computer screen and everyone's, every emergency first responder's car, I mean, and the fire department, location of hydrants. You know, the pressure of each hydrant, I mean, I'm rambling on here, but there's, there's a great opportunity using GIS, and Orange County does have that. So, yeah, that, that, yeah, I, Jim, I think that this is such a, the scope continues to grow on this. But, you know, we, we should put in a line item for this, I think, and, you know, maybe a plug number. I don't know. I don't know how the board feels about that. But it would certainly remind us to, you know, to be dealing with this, with this issue. What does the board think about putting a, a line item in there for, you know, the, the survey and so forth of, of our system?
So, my only concern is that a professional engineer is going to want to go back and do it again, anyway. Although this may be...
Your concern meaning that it's going to cost money?
Yeah, we're going to pay an engineer again to verify that what we paid somebody $1,500 to do.
Mm-hmm.
Is accurate.
Well, I mean, technically, I think what Jim's talking about is whatever information we do have will be put into, input into the Orange County system for free. So, you know, you're, you're right, but that does not negate the fact that they're going to do that for us, which is terrific.
Our, our experience in having Weston and Sampson enter data on their exist, on our existing GIS map of water and sewer, which I think we own, we should actually look at that to see who owns it. Do we own the data or they own the data? But, you know, to date, they have not been unreasonable in terms of their charges for, for manipulating it. It's, it's not free, but, you know, it's not five figures either.
Yeah, no, I, well said. I mean, I think the real charge is going to be going around and determining by examining every, you know, every location and determining how bad it is or where it goes. That's probably, that fact-finding information is probably going to be the difficult thing. And we do own the map if we paid our bills. And, yeah, so, yeah, this is, I, I just feel there's a real value in this. And ultimately, it could help us with a 10-year plan, and it could help us with borrowing. It could help us, you know, with bonds, grants. Having this kind of information shovel-ready, if you will, for the potential that's coming down the road with the infrastructure plan. You know, we want to, I, I think we want to have two or three shovel-ready projects, if you will, that we can apply for grants or money. And that's high on the priority list. I know the board's discussed that before, and this could be one of those types of projects. All right, so we dominated the floor there for a while, a little offbeat discussion here. During this time, has anyone thought of any questions specifically about the budget they would like to comment on?
If nobody's got anything else to say, I'll, I'll just comment on, we have currently three shovel-ready projects in the water department, and we're looking for grant opportunities there. Obviously, we got a grant for the 200,000 odd that we're spending on Arald, or sorry, significantly more than that, that we're spending on Arald engineering right now. So, subject to what the outcome of Weston Sampson's analysis, you know, which they're doing right now and our negotiations with DEC, that's going to be realistically our next, our most pressing shovel-ready project.
Yeah, and why don't you go ahead and list the other two?
Sorry, let, let, list the other two? Well...
Oh, I thought you said you, you were going to talk about the three shovel-readies that we have.
Sorry, in, in the water department, it's under Tuxedo Lake. It's under Route 17.
Oh, yeah, right.
And then...
Why don't we, why don't you explain what that is, just so people know? We're trying to kill time here.
Quick and dirty, and John can probably give better granularity is, there's a, the piping is no longer decode. We, we continually have leaks and breakage there, and we're having to replace it at the least opportune times during the day and at the inconvenience of water customers. So, we had looked at this project, I guess, six or seven years ago, and it came in at 1.3 million. We've sliced and diced it and tried to come up with a couple different scenarios and options, which will be more scalable and hopefully more doable. But the problem is you're going under Route 17, going underneath Metro North Railroad, and you're going underneath the Ramaco River. So, there are a fair amount of hurdles and obstacles. So, that, that's it in a kind of generalized form.
Right, and would you consider the, the, the piping under the Tuxedo Lake as a potential shovel-ready?
To me, it is. And I believe in September of last year, we, you know, we scoped, scoped it out, gave Weston and Sampson the mandate to kind of prepare the documents for when there are WEAR grants, that we will have the ability to go after that. And obviously, you know, on a sewer, it's, I believe, 30% of the cost of the project, the grant. On a water project, it's close to 50 to 60%. So, it's compelling on the water side, given how valuable water is, to have shovel, shovel-ready projects that we can present.
Right, exactly. And also, just to update everybody that didn't attend one of the previous meetings, our engineer is looking at new technology for that project. And I mentioned it, it's a technology where the piping that brings the water from the water plant over to the west side of the village could be replaced by stretching across the water and then sinking it. Whereas the health department, the Department of Health and potentially DEC would like to see us bury it under the lake. And that, of course, we all know is granite and would be extremely expensive. So, our engineer is currently working with the DEC to, to see if that's something that they would accept. So, that's definitely on, on the burner. Alan, any others that you could think of that we could discuss?
Uh, unfortunately, not off the top of my head.
Right, right. But I think the trustees are in agreement that there's an opportunity there for taking advantage of the federal program if it comes through and preparing projects that we could immediately apply for. And I don't know the details. I don't know if they would pay 100%. I have no idea what ultimately it's going to, going to do. Oh, I might as well add, you know, I'm getting a lot of inquiries. I see some of the people that are currently in attendance this evening have actually contacted me about the construction on Route 17 through Slotsburg. And, you know, now, you have to, there's a couple of things that are challenges for the Tuxedo government, if you will. One is it's in Rockland County, not Orange County. So, we're, in terms of Orange County government, they're limited. We have contacted our state senators and representatives about it. I don't feel like we have the kind of traction that we would need as a community to make a difference. Now, that could be rectified potentially if we were to do some sort of community petition campaign of our representatives or continue having dialogue with them, which we're doing. But I just want everyone to know that it's not something we're ignoring. But we are handicapped as to what we can do, because it is in a different county. Do any of the trustees want to add to that? Or does anyone in the, that's participating in the audience have any suggestions they'd like us to consider?
Hi, David. This is Michelle.
Hi, Michelle. How are you?
I'm well, thanks.
And your address, if you don't mind. I don't mind to be a pain, but...
Oh, that's okay. Michelle Lindsay, 2 Eagle Mountain Road.
Thank you.
And I see Jay's on here as well, Jay Reichardt. We're both members of the town board. And we have been in contact as well with Carl, Carl Brabinek. And as you said, you know, that's all we could keep doing is expressing our concerns and seeing what we could do to push it along. But it's, 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 as you said, out of the county.
Oh, that's, that's really good to know, though. I mean, you know, we should probably combine forces potentially. And maybe our board and your council could, could get together and do something. But, boy, that would, that would just be great. It is, I mean, as everyone knows, it's probably the worst it's ever been. Robin, my wife, Robin, went to the bank the other day, had to go. First, of course, she went to Chase, and it was closed. And then she had to drive into Saffern, and it took her 45 minutes. So, you know, it's, it's really, it's really inconvenient for us. Does anyone know off the top of their head what that project actually is at this point? There's so many reiterations of it. Is it...
Yeah, originally, there were some sewer pipe problems that were taken care of. And then apparently, Orange and Rockland was adding some more work to the project. And then down the line, you saw that they're doing the sidewalks, and I think there's going to be a Department of Transportation project for a road diet.
Why us?
Slotsburg got 6 million, or I forget exactly, 4 million, and then maybe some more money to do that from the Department of Transportation.
Maybe the prior candidates who claimed they got that 17 million, maybe that's what's happening.
Anyway, we'll keep, we'll, let's keep ours, you know, each other updated.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that.
If I can just throw my two cents in, don't forget, we have a south...
Your name, your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, Jay Reichardt.
Hi, Jay.
Where do I live? 121 Laurel.
Well said.
We have a south gate, and it lets you end run all of the, all of the construction, if you remember to use it.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. It's, it's definitely a great alternative. So, I assume you, you agree with Michelle that, you know, maybe we should combine forces, but, you know, we are handicapped because it's in Rockland?
Yeah, I agree with that. And, you know, and it's a county slash state project, so they'll say nice things, but I don't know if it's going to change anything.
Right, right. So, I hope that gave some clarity to the people that are with us this evening that have called me and asked what's going on. Right, right. So I hope that gave some clarity to the people that are with us this evening that have called me and asked what's going on. Alright, so, and thanks Jay. Any other questions about the budget?
Mac, it's, it's Shell Farley again at 4 Ridge.
Hi Shell, how are you?
Great. I will, I'll reach out to Ed Day, who's the county executive in Rockland and just ask him what the timing is and if there's anything we can possibly do to expedite it.
That would be greatly, greatly appreciated. And for those that don't know, Shell ran for Congress in the last term, representing our district and has some good connections. And so that would be greatly appreciated, Shell. And yeah, just let, just let us know if there's anything we can do.
Mayor, this is Claudio Guazzoni on East Summer Road. Might you be aware if any of this were coming up from Slotsburg, are pipes and sewers from, you know, water, bringing water up to places along 17 that currently don't have water and don't, don't have sewers?
I, I have no idea. I'll be very honest with you. I don't know.
And I'm saying that because a few years back, I had some very fruitful discussions with the head of Suez who controls the water works. You know, and they expressed interest in buying our customers in our customers that were not in the park.
Yeah, I remember this, yeah.
Right, and maybe we can, we start those discussions because a lot of our headaches and the water leakage under 17, if they hook those people up to Suez, it might relieve a lot of our pain.
It really would. I mean, it's a, it's a balance, right, of revenue versus future costs, but I certainly agree, it's worth looking into.
Yes, but we can sell them the water from the lake.
Right, the infrastructure, the town section, I mean, we recently had a major water main break there. And correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, don't we have some lead piping there?
Unfortunately, well, fortunately no lead piping. Unfortunately, it's asbestos type of piping that's going from underneath Route 17.
Yeah, I wonder if that qualifies for the, I know that they're, that the, that the current administration, federal administration has talked about lead, replacing lead pipes across the country. I don't know, I'm sure asbestos would come into the picture somewhere.
Let's put it this way, both are problematic, legs far more problematic.
Okay, well, thank you, Claudio. Any other questions? Oh, we've got a good, we've got 40 people on tonight, just to let everyone know. Alright, any other questions? We have seven minutes left. Every question is, is fine and permissible. Even if you just want to know what a line item is. We can scroll down for you to the line item and answer your question.
Alright, I'll, I'll bite, Mayor. This is, this is Jay Reich Scott at 121 Laurel again.
Hello, Jay.
And I missed a bunch of the early meeting, so I apologize if you already explained this, but on page 5 of 5, all of the proposed sewer budget items have been lined out.
Right.
We're, we're not changing the system this year, is that the theory or?
Okay, great question, Jay, thank you. So, we determined that by the time the tax bill would be sent out, which is, John can give me the exact date, but we did not have enough time to organize the department legally, technically, the changes that would have to be made in the village code, local law changes, et cetera. So, what you originally saw was where we had taken all the expenses out of the general fund, moved them into the sewer, to the new sewer fund. And we're preparing to set rates and start billing. I believe there's 119 customers that currently pay, well, the 119 owners that currently pay sewer that wouldn't have to anymore because they don't use the sewer, they have either septic tank or vacant land. And then, of course, it would be an equitable allocation of sewer costs based on water in, water out, et cetera. But because we did not have the time to, to do it, the board decided to put it on hold. So, the, the line items that are crossed out, what it means technically is that we took all of those items, put them back into the general fund as it was when we initially took them out. And we decided that in the very near future, we will bring this up again and get it done. If, if the public, if we have public support. And we put in expenses in this year's budget to help us get there. So I hope that gives some clarity there.
Yeah, understood.
Any experience with this, Jay?
With what?
With sewer departments? As your, as an engineer, which you are?
I, I mean, it's not my engineering specialty, but I have amongst my other town board responsibilities is I'm involved with the Hamlet Sewer Plant, which is down there on Route 17, sort of behind Steve's.
Right, the new one.
Well, the new one and the old one. The old one's right next to the new one. That's a whole long conversation, we can have another time.
Right.
There are park residents who actually go to that sewer plant.
Correct, there, yeah, there, there are 17 or 18 of those.
Right, basically, everybody coming up the front slope there on.
That's right, because of the gravity, of the gravity, lack of gravity, those go right into the town. That's correct. I think, John, didn't I, weren't they included in the 117 or 19 accounts I mentioned?
Yeah, I guess there's approximately 17 or 18 village residents whose sewer goes to the town. Then there's approximately 18 or 20 residents at the south end of the park who are on septic. And then there's some other cases in between.
Right, people that have wells but use the sewer.
Yes.
There's a variety of circumstances. It, it all has to be pulled together and then presented to the public. And then, you know, what we would do, Jay, is we would then have the rates, set the rates and then have a public hearing about the rates. So that everyone feels that it's fair and equitable. Right now, what we do is everything's in the general fund, which means it gets flowed through your property taxes. So essentially, everyone's paying the same in the sense that they have their own tax rate. So, someone that's a weekend person that, you know, has a small kitchen, is subsidizing, if you will, say, the Tuxedo Club, who obviously, you know, probably has a, a high usage number. So, we're looking to make it equitable and we're also looking to use this as a source of revenue for infrastructure projects. Of course, the, my only regret is we didn't do this 20 years ago. But it would be fashioned after the, after the, after the water department, the water fund, which has been very successful. And, you know, allows us to do a lot of capital projects using the, the, the markup of the, of the water fund. Okay, Jay, you finished or?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone else? We have two minutes left before we open the regular meeting. Alright, so I'll tie it up. Thank you so much for your questions. Very, very productive, really. This is, I, I would say this is one of our best sessions. And we'll take everything that we discussed into consideration. We're going to close the public hearing if the board agrees. And then any future changes we make before we vote into the, the final product, I'll put it out on the mayor's newsletter. So, that said, I'm gonna ask the board if they would like to close the public hearing.
Yes, this requires a second.
No, I'm not, I actually haven't served the motion yet. I'm just wondering before, before I serve the motion, is there any, any other options? Paul, are you good to go with that?
I think we are. I, I don't think we can legally carry it forward any further.
Correct, correct, okay. Be it resolved, that the board of trustees closed the public hearing on the 2021, 2022 tentative budget at 7:00 PM. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Welcome, we are now in, I, I like to call our regular session to order. If you're able, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Elizabeth. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor McFadden.
No problem. Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw. Trustee Gluck.
Present.
Trustee Casker.
Present.
Trustee McHugh.
Present.
Alright, so let's move right into, to everything. Let me pull up my agenda. Okay, so, we have distributed the monthly reports in minutes, both on the website and to the trustees. That includes police, water, building, DPW, treasurer, liaison, minutes for the meeting and budget workshops. So I'd like to ask the public or board first, let me ask the board, if they have any questions about it? Questions or comments from the board?
None.
Okay, how about the public? Does the public care to comment on the reports and old or new business that we have on this evening's agenda? And it, I'll open that up to the floor. So to be clear, I'm inviting comments from the public on any agenda item this evening.
I'll jump in, Mr. Mayor.
And is that Jay?
That is, Jay Reich.
Hi Jay, thank you.
21 Laurel. I know that the WeWah is on the docket. Are we taking comments now? Are we gonna?
Absolutely, sure.
Okay. With regard to the question of who should be running the WeWah, whether it's the village or the WeWah Beach Club or I think that's a, a great topic for discussion. My concern is that we have something like six weeks until people should be able to get into the water. And there is, even if you approve the lease for the club, the beach club to run it again this year, we're gonna be scrambling to meet that date.
Are you on the board yet?
I am not, I just get tapped for a lot of things.
So, so you actually participated in opening it?
Yeah, quite often. And I'm sure that Bonnie or Jen or the actual board members could speak to the, the requirements more. But I'm concerned that if the village takes it over for this season, the learning curve involved will make it less likely that that will be successfully opened in reasonable time for a swimming season. With not throwing any rocks at the ability of any of, of the people involved with that, just of new enterprises. So, my, I would like to ask that you guys give careful consideration to the question of when is the best time to enact any change? And I would suggest that perhaps it makes more sense to run it like we've always done this year. And then we've got a whole year to get whatever we're gonna do up, running and organized. Similar to what you decided to do with the, with the, with the sewer district. And I will shut up now.
Oh, thank you, very constructive comment. We're definitely considering that. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, it's Elizabeth Cottonore again.
Hi, Elizabeth.
And hi, I would just say that I agree with the previous speaker, Jim, wholeheartedly. Any changes, I think it's too close to the opening date to initiate the kind of change you're discussing.
Thank you very much. Also, very constructive. Alright, who else do we have?
Yes, Mary Gretzer would like to speak.
Hi, Mary, how are you? Just name your address, please.
State my address, 17 Ridge Road in Tuxedo Park. And I, I would like to say I wholeheartedly, as you probably know, because we spoke with Jay, it's not the time to be doing this. I think that there are things to be worked. If indeed this idea of having the village run the WeWah Beach Club were to take place, it, it shouldn't be now. You need to have many, many discussions and be careful with, with what you're doing and you don't have time to do that before a season now. And you also should keep in mind that the WeWah Beach Club, as it exists now, has been historically present, running that, that club for, I forget, 87, 85, 87 years. It's, it's a real blow to the people who ran it for all those year, years, to have the village take it away. And if, in fact, you can do things to, to, to help make it cheaper, then I don't understand why you can't do that and let the club continue to run it, because they are doing so successfully.
Do you mind if I ask why it would be a blow?
It feels like there are people, my fellow residents of the park, who don't feel that these people are, 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 you know, competent enough or good enough at running it.
I, I'll go out on a limb. If, if I were to compare it with the Village Boat Club, which is run by village taxpayers, they have been successful at contributing to the improvement of the facility that they're assigned to, which is at the end of Shastelu Road. They've paid for their own docks, the maintenance of the docks.
I'm, I'm a member of the boat club, so I'm.
Okay, good, but for those that don't, you know, you know, there, there was a beautiful stone wall put at the edge of the water. And that's done without our even asking. Whereas the WeWah Beach Club, that's been running the situation for so many years, hasn't even offered, even in this current contract, a dime towards improving this, the space.
We, over the years, the WeWah Beach Club has offered and paid for many improvements to that property and swimming.
I'm only, I'm judging it only as what I see now and as when I've been an elected official.
But I'm telling you that historically, they have indeed done many things to that property. For the last several years, their, their membership has been way down due to, first, the fact that there was no water in the lake, so people didn't want to join if they weren't gonna be able to swim. And now due to COVID. So, they haven't got the money to do that at the moment, but they are responsible for the, for the bathrooms and for a lot of the, for planting things and, and cleaning up. I mean, I, as a member, went down there and spent time cleaning that property before the, the, the DPW got involved, every year.
And no, and I appreciate that. I'm sure that the village appreciates it and the board certainly appreciates it.
Things, I would, tree maintenance and stuff with that property. Stuff to the grass and all the rest of it. Would things have been done? They, you know, we, they put in the structures which probably aren't there anymore because I understand that they, they, they had a hard time with them, but they, they provided all those swings and the playsets and, and, and the, and the, I know that the rotums that are in the sand and stuff has definitely provided.
Right. Yeah, no, and I.
On your annual basis.
Yeah, I, I just personally, as a fiduciary of the village taxpayers, I, I'm just very disappointed in their offer of $1,000 to lease, to license the property. I think it's very low. We have costs, for example, where we're, we were talking about it earlier, where we're spending quite a bit of money on maintaining the, the mill foil in the water and the lake manager for the WeWah Lake. And I've brought this up, I, I really feel as a fiduciary that the offer compared to potentially other offers is, is a potential problem. I, I would like to say, though, I would, I would like to take a moment to say, because I feel that some of the negotiations have been portrayed improperly. My offer to do this was, in my view, was a win-win. A phrase I used was, if the village runs this, all you have to do now. My offer to do this was, in my view, was a win-win. A phrase I used was, if the village runs this, all you have to do now is show up with your picnic basket and your bathing suit and enjoy yourself. My my current, my my most recent offer, which I would absolutely bring back on the table if if the Weewa Beach Club were willing to do it, would be something like the village would run the finances and the physical plan. Throw some money in there, you know, right away, five, 10 grand, right away in this budget. Start fixing it up. And the Weewa Beach Club would maintain its current status of running the day-to-day. I'm sure they're ready to go. I agree with Jay, you know, if we take it on, you know, the 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 membership would probably have to adjust to the fact that it may not open on Memorial Day and so forth. There would be definite a definite learning curve. But, you know, the the point is, I I think, you know, we have to consider at least what has been offered to us on the table. There's a potential of a resident donating money to a village managed club without changing the membership of the hamlet.
For one year.
Well, I mean, may I just say, I mean, are you referring to the security of the hamlet membership?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just address that because I think that was misportrayed too. The fact of the matter is that any board under the current arrangement, any three members, any board, past, present or future, could eliminate the hamlet membership membership by a vote. There is nothing in the local law that prevents that. So currently, whether the Weewa Beach Club is running the Weewa Beach Club or the village, the security is no different. Secondly, there's a clause in the licensing agreement that states something to the effect that at any time during the season, three trustees could end the entire beach club. So what I thought I was presenting had no more risk built into it than the current situation does. And I offered the Weewa Beach Club Executive Committee a five-to-10-year guarantee. And that was rejected, or it was not mentioned. So I was really doing my best to offer what I thought was a win-win and a win-win for the village in the sense that we would immediately start putting money into it and repairing it, bringing it up to speed, making it more respectable, getting new equipment in there, new barbecue equipment, whatever we would decide to do immediately, and even extend the hours. But in terms of the Weewa Beach Club being concerned about getting kicked out, if you will, or not being renewed, I offered a five-to-10-year guarantee. That's obviously was rejected, unfortunately. I don't know why, but it was.
I no longer serve on that executive board, but so I I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, look, I I think that I think that the board, you know, we can, we can go around the table, but there is an offer from a resident, potentially a potential offer to donate $100,000. And what that would mean is that we would immediately, I mean, we would hire a manager. The village, if the village were to agree to do this, we'd hire a manager, we'd deal with the memberships, everything. And it would include the same terms and agreements with the hamlet membership that we have now and that we've always had. So I don't understand the threat, if you will, that people, some people think is associated with doing that. I do believe it's village-owned property and it's underutilized and it's potential. I believe that $1,000 for leasing it is low. I think it should include a commitment from the Weewa Beach Club to improve the property, maybe two, three, four, five grand a year. Maybe that means raising membership. I don't know what what that might mean. But I just wanted to get my points out. I'm sorry to hog the floor. I don't know if any of the other trustees want to comment.
Can I finish? I'm not quite done. I I I I hear what you're saying and I I but once again, I would just say this has been a historical agreement that this club has had, and I really very strongly feel that it shouldn't be done quickly. I think it's important what you're doing. And I don't think this is the time. I think you need to give it one more summer and then have more leisurely discussions, starting in September, when everybody can understand and agree and not feel under the pressure of getting the club open and getting, you know, what they've always historically had for this particular year.
Yeah, I I think that's very constructive. Okay, do we have any other comments?
Yes, I think I'm, I hope I'm pronouncing the name properly. Ifa Clark has had her hand raised.
Yes, this is Clark.
Good. Hi, thank you for giving me the floor. I'm sorry if it's some interruptions. The kids are still
I think I remember you from last year. You live in the in the Hamlet.
I do, I do, and I appreciate you guys giving me
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to speak. Like so many of them have already said this evening, I do feel that it would be a massive rush move to take the membership from the Weewa Club this year. And I do believe you should leave it another year till you can kind of work out the details because I I do believe both sides are getting quite heated and why both sides are making very smart remarks and well-taught-out remarks. I don't think that either side kind of wants to hear them. And I feel that it will inhibit the the start of the club days by kind of trying to dispute them. I think Mary Gretzer is right in saying that the year would make a massive difference. And I know there's a lot of comments throughout the entire park, which is respectful because they're living up there and and they're paying the taxes and it's it is owned by the village. And there is a massive amount of remarks down here in the Hamlet because people are fearful that they would not be allowed the membership anymore, which is your right to renegate it. And so I do believe going, if you want the opinion that going forward, it should be just left for the year if possible, please.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Okay, any other comments?
Yes, I think Jennifer Darling has her hand raised.
Thank you, Jennifer, please.
Hi, thank you. So I'm the Vice President of the Weewa Beach Club. I also live at 95 Summit Road, so I'm a village resident. I just wanted to address some of the things that were discussed. So I don't think it's fair to say that we have not put in any improvements. We, the, we purchased a new dock a few, a few years ago. It cost $5,000. We also did have the money set aside for a playground, which we intended to purchase last season, but we were asked to to pay for policing at the North Gate so we could bring our members in, our non-village resident members, in through the North Gate on the weekends. And that ate ate up the entire amount that had been set aside for for the playground. And those, the number of cars averaged about about 10. So it it's not about, I I don't think it's fair to say that we haven't looked to put in improvements. We have. We try to do so and keep our costs to all of our members reasonable. We did have a a membership increase last year because we have a COVID monitor. And in order to have purchased all those supplies and kept the beach fully accountable and hire an extra person, we also paid for that COVID monitor. So we did have a hike last year, and I just, I I want to make that clear. We also were ready to purchase a playground. We had to reallocate those funds to the to the North Gate. So so I I just, I also want to say that we didn't reject your five-to-10-year guarantee on on the hamlet. What we did say was, we don't think that there's enough time to figure out how this would work, right? And even if the village held the permit and dealt with the finances, there are a lot of things for us to consider and figure out, again, how how would it work? The employees work for the village. What's the impact of that? Are they public civil servants? How does that work?
They would not be.
I I'm just asking the question.
Right, the answer would be no.
Works for the village. What happens on the weekend when there's a scheduling problem, right? How are we, the village, the Weewa Beach Club, going to fund, fund, fund money that we need, right? There are a lot of questions that we didn't work through and that and the analysis of how it would work, right? No one, we didn't tell you that we didn't want to do it. We said, we don't believe that we have time to talk through those things. And that's been, that's been our position in order to get the season open this year. So that was the conversation that we feel we had. It wasn't a rejection of your guarantee or anything like that. I do want to address the $1,000 and and talk about where that came from. That was the amount that had been put into the budget, the village budget. So we offered the $1,000. Obviously, we would still like to purchase a playground if we have the money for that, right? And that playground would be donated to the village. Of course, we would like to make improvements, right? But right now, we can't tell you, are we going to have to use the North Gate? Are we going to, is the village going to take it over? Are we going to do it, right? There's a lot of open questions that still have to be answered before we could even discuss those things. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
No, I appreciate it. Thanks for clearing that up. On in terms of road safety, I, you know, last year was just a crazy year with the park being so full and the roads being so full. And I I fully support the North Gate concept. I think it was very successful. If you, I think it was an average of 14 cars, but let's say it's 10. That's, you know, 10 cars is 20 trips. And if you multiply that over the two weekend days, we saved a significant number of traffic trips. And that just means a lot to me a as a mayor. And I understand the cost, but safety, there is no cost on that you can put on the safety. And the roads were so packed. I I really, I really do support it, and I think it was successful. I mean, if it were 20 cars or 30, it might make might make more sense because you could amateurize the cost. But even saving 80 or 100 or 180 trips on that causeway, I think is a win. But, yeah, that's open for discussion. Thank you, Jen.
And we have one last person with his hand up, JHR, Mr.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it's me again, Jay Rashgat.
Jay, there is a limit.
I understand. I just want to address this idea of of improvements. Some of the things you mentioned, like mill foil treatments in the lake. The Weewa Beach Club operates the swimming, does have exclusive use of the park area during operational hours. And that's mostly because there's no way to, you know, there's no way to keep, if there wasn't exclusive use, how would the lifeguard know if you were a member or not and allowed to swim? Unless we painted all the members blue or something.
I'm not for that, but
But for the majority of the time in the year, that is the village's park. And and it's not unreasonable to expect that improvements to that park would be and maintenance of that park would be funded by the village. I mean, in the same way that we fund maintenance of the other big park we have, which is the 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 race course. And well, absolutely, I think that the 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 beach club should be contributing as much as possible and especially to the parts of the part that are being used exclusively by club members. I don't think it's necessarily reasonable to expect that they provide all of the maintenance for that facility.
Right, I know, I agree. I mean, I could see a matching program, certainly. If the club were to say, look, I'll put in two, and I say, great, we'll put in five. The the issue, though, with one of the, one of the limits I see to to the situation currently and that I had suggested in my initial presentation was that because unless you're a member during the summer, you can't swim in the lake because you can only swim when there's a lifeguard. So even though a resident could go to the, from sunrise to one, which is when, you know, the hours start for the Weewa Beach Club, till dusk or eightish, and after, you can't swim. So you really, we really don't have use unless we're a member. So the 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 club does take on a pretty significant role for that regard. I I I've thought of even having another club that's open from early morning till one. We would take out our own health permit and set our own rules and have our own membership. And so people could join either club. I mean, and that really would be a shared use of the space. And in that case, you know, we we certainly would be in a position to to suggest improvements. But I mean, maybe that's a solution.
I'm not sure that's viable based on Department of Health rules and other things.
I've actually looked into it, not to interrupt you. I did, I have had extension, extensive conversations with the health department, and it is viable.
Okay, but I mean, I'm sure that if more village members wanted to join and and the finances could work to open the the swimming earlier as used to be done, then I'm sure that the club would be willing to to look at that. But again, I I don't really want to argue the question of who should be running it.
Right.
And I'm kind of agnostic on that point. I just, I just really like to be able to go swimming this summer. Or, you know, unless you're opening up your pool, in which case I'll come knock on your door.
I wish I had one. I've been trying to talk Robin into putting one in for quite a while. No, no, I appreciate it, Jay. Very constructive. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor McFadden, it's Bonnie.
Hi, Bonnie. How are you? Where, state your address, please.
Three Schoolhouse Lane in the Hamlet.
Thank you.
Um, I hardly know where to start, but I guess I'm going to start with a little historical perspective in that since I've done this before, I've said this before, but I have a feeling there are new people in the audience tonight. The the troubles, the financial troubles of the Weewa Beach Club basically run parallel to the troubles with the Weewa Dam. And in 2012, well, also with a little bit of the financial crash in 2008. Historically, the Weewa Beach Club averaged about 250 memberships for almost two decades before that time. And they were pretty evenly split between Hamlet and Park. 2012, when, after many times that the village put money into a dam, trying to do patches here and there, and finally deciding no more of that, you were going to take on the heavy burden of replacing the dam. In order for the dam not to fail and possibly flood the Hamlet, water was taken out of the lake to the point at which we had 30 feet of sandy beach inside the swimming area. Our membership dropped. That same year was the year, I brought this up at the last meeting, that there was a fish kill on Warwick Brook, running off possibly from the mulch pile, and that emptied into Weewa Lake. And the mayor at the time actually said there would be no swimming in Weewa Lake until the village had completed its own study. They weren't even taking the DEC's word for when swimming should be allowed again. The village paid for and had to satisfy itself that swimming was now safe. That kind of confidence level, I think, contributed to people not joining. The lack of a diving board. We haven't had a diving board since 2012. People with older children find that that's what their kids want, and that's not there. 2017, we, the lake was drained. What was left in the lake, you know, looked like primordial soup. Nobody's fault. That's what happens when you drain a lake. But we tried opening that year as a picnic playground area, thinking that people could still come, use the picnic tables grill, play in the sand, the playground, whatever. And we garnered 66 memberships from a high of 250 for decades before. 2018, we didn't even have the money to do that because we still had to pay staff. We still had to pay insurance. Interestingly, the insurance difference for liability insurance between whether you have swimming and not swimming is was around $500. We were shocked. We thought we would get a much cheaper offer of liability insurance with no swimming. So 2018, we didn't open at all. 2019, there was a question of how much mill foil would be in the lake after the dam was completed and the water was allowed to refill. And as you recall, we didn't sign an agreement that year till June 26th. I believe it was June 26th.
Which year was that?
That was in 2019, the year that lake was refilled. And then last year, we had to deal with the COVID crisis. So I I think that you kind of have to look at farther back in history to get a true to get a true picture of what's happened at the Weewaw Beach Club. For example, in two thousand and eight and nine, two thousand and eight, we paid five thousand dollars in a lease fee. Two thousand and nine, we paid four thousand. Two thousand and ten and eleven, we paid five thousand each. And that was with Mayor Stebbins and as part of our lease agreement. That money went into into the general fund, but was on account for the Weewaw Beach Club making improvements at the beach and then submitting the bills for what we had done with the village, we were reimbursed. So we invested nineteen thousand dollars in those four years. We have had Boy Scouts who made it their Eagle Scout project to replace seven bend, uh, seven grills at the beach. The Weewaw Beach Club contributed to that as well as the the monies that he collected as part of his Eagle Scout project. We have put in many tables and grills over the years. We have planted trees and we have worked in coordination with the Village of Tuxedo Park. Way back when, when we replaced partitions in the bathrooms because they were rusted, the village bought them and the Weewaw paid for the people to install them. There were many hand-in-hand projects. In fact, most projects were hand-in-hand. And all of the projects have to be approved by the village before we do them. So no pieces of playground equipment, tree, bathroom partitions, whether we we did the bathroom floors over with an epoxy treatment. Our maintenance man painted the outside of the bathhouses and the inside, the village paid for the paint. There there has been a hand-in-hand cooperative effort for decades. Just because the last few years, the money hasn't been there. I think if you look at the numbers and the circumstances, you can understand why. And as Jen pointed out, between the COVID monitor last year, which cost us the, between the two people who staffed it, fifty-two hundred dollars and the use of the north gate, which is kind of a COVID-related thing because the park was so full because of COVID and people exiting the city and people not traveling to Europe or wherever. So more and more people were staying home. So I consider the use of the north gate as COVID-related, really. It was an effort to be, you know, keep people who were biking and everything safe on the roads in the park. And then, of course, misceling that, those two things minus the supplies and things that we had to pay for to clean the bathrooms three times a day and all of that kind of stuff. That's ninety-one hundred dollars. That that could have been used. And that's with, we only had a hundred and twenty-one members last year.
Yeah, I think it, I think I should walk back my comment that nothing's been put into the into the improvement by the Weewaw Beach Club. I really am referring, I was referring to my own experience. And I don't think that's quite fair in the context of what I'm hearing. So I I'd like to apologize for that. I think that clearly you have done quite a bit, quite a bit of effort and money into the park. So I apologize for that. I I really was referring to my most recent experiences. I guess I sort of came on board when we were doing the one dollar during the Weewaw Dam repairs and so forth. So I guess it's fair for me to walk that back, so I apologize for that. Um, that said, um, is there anything, I mean, honestly, if working as a team, if the village ran it and put thousands of dollars into improving it, and there was no change to the Hamlet memberships, i- i- is it, is it that bad?
Well, let me, let me ask a question. You stated just earlier in this meeting, and and you have stated, you stated to Jen and I when we met on the twenty twenty-ninth, I believe it was, that you support Hamlet membership. You've stated that.
Correct.
Other times, I've heard you say that as well.
Yes, you know, I'm an advocate. I remember ten, fifteen years ago when you, I was not an elected official at the time, and you had, you had requested expanding the membership from the Hamlet border to the town. I went out personally and raised five thousand dollars for the club so that you would not have to do that. And I've always been an advocate, as you know. But viewed as a fiduciary, I just, I mean, there, you know, it could be the way it was presented. It could be that it's short notice. But it's clearly created reaction. But ultimately, maybe when cooler heads prevail, myself included, you know, there's a real benefit to the village running it, to the village taxpayer running it if nothing changes. But we'll leave that for future discussion. I see Paul is looking at me. I want you to shut up when you're doing well.
Well, I I I wanted to go back to the Hamlet membership because, you know, I've said this before. I I am a president of the whole club, but I am a member from the Hamlet. So, you know, I I, that's my heart. You said earlier in this meeting that you you were happy to support what we've always had with the agreement with the Hamlet. But what we have now is forty-nine Hamlet members. And I did a little bit of quick math today. Of those forty-nine Hamlet members, fourteen are over the age of seventy-five and four more are over the age of seventy. So just a little demographics. For the last two years, Hamlet membership has been listed to only people who were on the list the year before. And people, given what I did historically, telling you what's been happening to Hamlet, well, actually, park and Hamlet memberships since two thousand and twelve, because the problems are fairly we lost members and park members didn't join either because it was a subpar facility. Not anybody's fault. You had to fix the dam. I get it. But that, that's, that's the cause and the effect, okay? So then we get to what historically was if you lived in the parts of the Hamlet that were allowed to join. And let me tell you, I get many calls when a summer comes up because my name, I guess, is, you know, out there is being involved with the beach club. And the first question when somebody calls me and says, I heard about this beach club, I'd like to join. My first question is, where do you live geographically? And if they don't clear the bar, they don't live inside the village or in the parts of the Hamlet that are allowed to join, I explain that to them very clearly. And and so we have been, we have lived, I'm a letter of the law person, okay? I, what you tell me we're supposed to do is what I do.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's any issue. I don't think that the board is concerned about a leak in the membership. I I know that's running like a tight ship. Yeah.
So so if it's, if we're going by what we have now, you said we are, you are willing to support the membership we have now and that we've always had, well, what we've always had has been a lot more Hamlet members. And I'm, I don't know if as many people want to join as you. But I know there are some people who want to join and have been precluded from joining. And that's, that's a problem I have with the Hamlet membership, how it's handled. I'm, I, I have to say that.
Okay, I'm not sure I know what you're talking about in that regard. But may I make a suggestion? We, we can move forward. The board will discuss the lease in later in the agenda. And if everyone feels that they've gotten to air their grievance, if you will, we'll move on to another subject for the public comment period. And then when that's, when we're done there, we'll move on with our agenda. But certainly, we're still open.
I think Shell Farley.
Okay, well, I.
Sorry.
Oh, do you see anyone else, Elizabeth, that's looking?
Shell Farley had her hand raised, but she just.
Shell, did you want to make a comment?
My comment was really quick. Bonnie raised an interesting point. I was just curious, and this is may not be the forum for it, just what the terms were of the accident insurance. But that's probably a conversation, you know, for the board.
We can do offline. Yeah, okay. All right, so, and by the way, I can post the contract, the the license agreement online if anybody's interested in looking at it, the current proposal. All right, so do we have any other comments on any other agenda items?
Mayor, if I may, this is Claudio Guazzoni from East Summit Road.
Please.
I wanted to congratulate you, the board, for concluding the village budgeting process. I do recognize that the village budgeting process is a long and tedious one, having gone through several of these myself. And I would like to thank the mayor and trustees for all the time they spent on this task. Yeah, I'm a little bit annoyed that the, unfortunately, our tax bill probably be going up this year. Hopefully, next year, we can all work a little bit harder and find a way to keep the village budget steady or maybe even decrease it a little bit. I thank you for your audience.
Oh, you're quite welcome. I I'll just say that we are very appreciative of the compliment. Everyone's worked very, very hard, including the village employees that had to come up with their budget and John and Elizabeth and Debbie, who's retired, but has been helping us through this process and training Elizabeth. We're proud, I know, that we stayed under the cap. We haven't finalized the final numbers yet. But yeah, we're very proud of that achievement. Their costs do go up. What we like about this budget is that we're, we feel we're being very responsible with putting money towards engineering fees and infrastructure, things that are going to help us maintain success as a village down into the future. And yeah, we're going to keep trying and keep trying to improve it. There's always room for improvement. And tonight's comments were very constructive. So thank you. All right, do we have any other questions, Elizabeth, that you can say?
No, I don't see anybody else with their hand raised.
Yes, trustee Galak.
Yeah, thank you. So this actually, I don't know where this fits in the agenda anymore, but I just wanted to mention two events, Earth Day tomorrow, that the Climate Smart, the joint Tuxedo and Tuxedo Village at Tuxedo Park Climate Smart Committee is sponsoring. One of them is a webinar on recycling. So if you really want to know what's happening to recycling, or if you really should be throwing that wax-coated milk carton in recycling or in the, in the trash, or does it make a difference? Tune in tomorrow, seven P M. The webinar's link is listed on the town website.
Did you say seven A M?
Seven P M.
Seven P M. Do you want me to put out something on the village website?
That would be great.
Okay.
Great. And there is a, another webinar on the twenty-eighth, seven P M, also on on climate science and and climate change, which comes very highly recommended, so.
Thank you, Paul, for sharing that. So without further ado, I'll call, last call on the comment period. Okay, thank you very much for your, for your comments. Very constructive. The comment period is now closed. And we're going to move on to the, I believe it's the consent agenda. And do any of the trustees have any questions or comments? Or would like to take any of the consent agenda items out to be discussed separately?
I I would just say, just for clarity's sake, item E, I don't think it needs to be necessarily taken out. I think if some color could be given there, no pun intended, that would make sense.
Very good. I like that. Little humor. Okay, John, Alan is asking how that came to to pass. And I think he'll speak to it as our building inspector. John, are you available?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. The issue came up, we're discussing this with a few people that were making applications to change the color of their home. There really is not much administrative work. There's really no engineering or legal work involved with the bar reviewing applications for paint color changes. So we thought it might be fair and prudent, you know, not to charge people who were applying to change the color of their home.
There's actually also a great example. In in one particular case, the resident wanted to change the color of their garage door. So we're talking a very small surface area that would have cost them several hundred dollars just to to ask for permission. So that's, that's the genesis, Alan.
Okay, so I guess my, my only question is, I I certainly don't have any problem with that. Only question is, does the applicant still have to go through the bar process? Or who's going to be the arbitrator? Because, you know.
No, absolutely have to go through the bar process still.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any of the other trustees want to pull that item out? Are we comfortable?
I don't want to pull it out. I just want to clarify.
Yeah, no, no, and I appreciate it. I I have one that maybe we can discuss and not pull out. But that's, that's the automobile for the police department. Just explain to me a little bit about what that lease is and everything.
Uh, sorry, with the.
With the new police vehicle.
Certainly. Chief, do you want to start the conversation off and then I I can finish it? Or you can probably finish it too. I don't need to talk for you, but.
Well, basically, we had an unforeseen event with one of our police vehicles that has ninety-five thousand miles on it. We were going to try to get another year out of it. But it was down on Mawa Ford for about a week with, you know, with some more damage, or not damage, but just repair work for the engine. It's out of warranty, so it's costing us quite a bit of money for maintenance. And so I requested the board that we put money back into the budget this year to purchase, to replace that vehicle.
Mm-hmm. And there was also a question about whether there was another vehicle we were paying for. I was a little confused about that.
Sorry, so I'll finish off. The chief, you can agree this is going to be identical to the other vehicle that you're awaiting delivery of, correct?
Correct. That's the the hybrid. It's half electric, half gas.
Correct. So what what we're doing is the hybrid. The the vehicle that's at Mawa Ford, the chief looked, it's got a book value of, our blue book value of around sixteen. So hopefully, we can put it on the auction site. We'll be declaring it surplus in short order, subject to the discussion right now. So buying a new vehicle is forty-nine K. We'd be using the same municipal lease corporation where we financed the D P, D P W trucks and also the other police vehicle. My interest rate was three point three nine percent. First payment is ten thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars. So basically, net-net, it's a wash. We get a new vehicle, we get a warranty. We don't have the upkeep issues, et cetera. So I I certainly support it. And on a net basis, when you look at the 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 sale of the other vehicle, I think it should just be in this year's budget and get this thing moving along as quickly as possible.
Right, okay. So that still leaves us with the the balance left on the one percent lease that currently has the midsize truck.
So, sorry, so re- re-ask the question.
Okay, so the the midsize truck that we replaced the larger truck with, that lease has a balance remaining that Robin from the leasing company would like to know if we're going to fill. And we were sort of reserving that. Are we in agreement that we're reserving that for the, for the pickup truck replacement for the D P W?
Yeah, ju- just for clarity's sake, we're, we're purchasing these vehicles. The company's called Municipal Lease Finance, but we, we, we being the village are purchasing all these vehicles. So that, that's one point of clarity. The other point of clarity on the car that's a currently under repair, we no longer have any payments, so it's been paid off. The residual that we have from changing the one truck that the D P W wanted to the new truck with the cylinder and everything, the residual on that, we're still waiting for a number from Jeff. I haven't seen it with regard to an alternative for the.
Right. Okay, yeah, we're on the same page. Okay, so I I'd like to leave it in the consent agenda. Does any, do any of the trustees have any further questions on that? Okay, let's touch briefly on the pollinator from the municipality. Does anyone have questions on that? Anything on the Greenway grant request letter? Okay, so it sounds to me like we can pass a resolution for the consent agenda. And that's very exciting. We're referring to, let's see. I moved the board resolve to pass the new business consent agenda, number nine, A through K. And the board has seen the resolutions. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Terrific. Thank you. Alan seconded that, and that was unanimous?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we, we have the Weewaw Fishing Club before us. And so have you, we, I sent out their, their new proposal to the board earlier in the week or late last week. Does anyone have any questions about that or comments? I have, I have the similar request that I'd like to discuss with them. I've scheduled a tour of the facility, and I'd like to talk. And I'd like to talk to them about also contributing to the maintenance of the lake and to repairs as well. And with the blessing of the board, I can bring that up. I don't know how you all feel. Do you feel you'd like to sign the agreement as presented? Have you thought through it?
No. I'll give you a couple of comments. One is they provide fish stocking for the year and have discussion with the DEC, present a proposal, and then buy from DEC hatchery. So they actually are doing that. And as we know from last board of trustee meetings, they repaired the dock and everything. So they are doing quite a few things. I think it would behoove us to punt on this till the next meeting. I'll let you go and see the facilities and then move it forward and have a little bit more extensive dialogue with them. And obviously, yeah, this somewhat dovetails with We Want Beach Club too. So I think, you know, we need to get clarity on both fronts before we make a decision. That's my two cents.
Thank you, Alan. Trustee Glock, Caster, and Shaw, any comment?
I'd like to see it. I've never been there. When are you doing your tour?
Either this week or early next week, and then thought maybe we'd call a special meeting if we had to, to, you know, to get the timeliness under control. I'd like to invite any other trustee that wants to come with me. In fact, we can do more than two trustees, because as long as we don't discuss anything, and just observe, take the tour, we're not violating any open meetings law. Similar to what the bar does when they visit a site or the BCA planning board. Okay, so without objection, then, we'll table this. Any objection? Okay, let's move on to the We Want Beach Club. I know that, Paul, you would ask for some further clarification on the current version to prior versions. I don't know if that was accommodated?
No, no, well, in a sense it was, yes. So there, you know, the question I had was really, can we see the differences between the prior, between what currently exists and what the current state of play was? Because there was a couple of versions of the licensing, of the license agreement that had gone out. So I think that was really just not mechanically achievable.
So do the trustees care to comment on the broader discussion of the village managing the facility or co-managing with the We Want Beach Club? That example was that We Want Beach Club does the day-to-day, and the village takes charge of the financial aspect of it and would then immediately put some money in if that would be something we'd agree to do in this year's budget. That option. And then also, I don't really think that we can discuss the $100,000 offer. That hasn't been firmed up at this point in time. And again, if that is no longer an option, I'd be more than happy to call a special meeting early to try and make a decision on this. Do the trustees have any questions about the fees or any other matters that are included in the current proposal?
Well, I think the 1,000 is way low. I do think it's a very interesting idea to have the village run it. And yeah, I think we could get people interested in it, in running it. Especially, I mean, everybody that I have spoken to about the village boat club, I mean, that is a real success about, you know, everybody chipping in and doing that, anyhow.
Thank you. How about you, trustee Caster?
I'd rather hear what trustee Glock and trustee McHugh have to say first. As the newest member of this board and having this been a club in existence for 87 years, I'd rather be last to make my comment.
Well, I would have to, I would have to get approval from trustees, Glock and McHugh. You want to raise them or call?
So, so I'm a member of the village boat club as well. And I think, you know, I think you went to the village boat club and said, you know, we're the government, we're here to help. The first thing they do is try and get you on a boat and set you adrift on the lake. You know, the village boat club is the epitome of a volunteer organization, where everyone pitches in together, helps and works and gets it done, and gets it done, you know, without government help and without, and with keeping expenses to the minimum. And a lot of that, you know, a lot of that spirit is also reflected in the, you know, in the beach club. And I think we want to, you know, I'd like to start by giving the beach club, you know, a round of applause, particularly for last year, in terms of how they got things together and running and put, you know, a beach facility, you know, in place under very, very difficult circumstances.
Yeah, I think the entire board's on the record applauding them. Yeah.
A round of applause also to all of us, including the mayor, who are trying to do something, I think, to try and, you know, improve the facility and make it, you know, make it a better facility for the village. I think there's, you know, there's certainly room for improvement all the way across the board. And the, you know, some of the comments we've heard about, you know, capital improvements and improving the facility that way, you know, certainly do have, you know, I think, a tremendous amount of merit. Having said all that, again, you know, we kind of live in the here and now. And we are, you know, six weeks or so away from what would normally be an opening season. And, you know, what we're pretty good at delivering water and sewer and, you know, running a police department and not letting our roads deteriorate to the point where they are in Slotesburg. I mean, I would be scared to death about, even if I thought it was a good idea for, you know, government to step in and reorganize things, I would be scared to death about taking on that sort of project, given our, given so, given it's so far out of anything remotely like our core competencies. And, you know, and some of the ideas of, you know, perhaps outsourcing it or something of that, you know, nature, just, you know, without a, you know, without really seeing any kind of budget or proposal for that. It just, you know, like that says, it's going to be, it's going to be more expensive. Managing it is going to be a nightmare. And so I kind of take what other people have said about if there are good ideas and good ways of trying to get this improved for future, let's, you know, let's talk about that over the next year. Let's see whether, you know, there's something that makes sense. But for now, in the interest of getting a, you know, a season up and running, I'm inclined to think let's tinker with what we have here, maybe.
Are you referring to the terms and conditions of the agreement? Tinkering?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now that's constructive. Do you have anything in particular in mind about tinkering?
Well, you know, I kind of, you know, if we're talking about framework, you know, I think in large part, the framework we had, I mean, let's step away from the agreement for a second.
Sure.
Conceptually. So the framework we had last year, I think, worked well. With a couple of exceptions, I think the, you know, exception, and we might differ on this, is utilizing the North Gate. You know, the traffic studies, we saw show that there was a fairly minimal amount of the traffic to come in, you know. I think you're right on target. I think it was 10 cars on a weekend day. Do you, is that, you know, is it worth stationing, you know, an officer at the North Gate? And for that kind of expense and that kind of impact, I would think not, but, you know, that could be discussed. Having a discussion about a, you know, six weeks might not be enough time to put in a, you know, a whole new management structure, but it's certainly enough time to talk about whether, you know, there should be X thousands dollars of potential improvements there and whether there might be, you know, what the sweet spot is in terms of perhaps some additional contribution by the beach club through membership fees without making it, you know, expensive. A lot of people who really can't afford a lot of expense there.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Trustee McHugh?
I guess I come out that I think first and foremost is the We Want Beach Club certainly provides, you know, an opportunity for residents to swim in our lakes, who are not members of the clubs or who are members of the club and want to use facilities. So however we progress, my view is, yeah, we want to move forward, get the Department of Health permissioning and everything. Whatever the structure is going forward, it certainly seems to be a question mark. And I'm not really sure where I come down on that, because I really don't have that much clarity on what may or may not be forthcoming with regard to donation. But I most definitely believe we should get it open and move forward in that regard. I certainly am of the opinion that, you know, the, you know, I don't, with regard to the number of members who are, I think it's, you know, we're talking about 49 members from the Hamlet. They've shown a commitment to the facility, so I would definitely, you know, give them the opportunity to stay members. But, you know, my view is, if we can enhance it, and make it more and more enjoyable and a destination for village residents, all that much better. So I think my driving force is, let's move this forward and get it open this year sooner rather than later and work through the details over the next couple of weeks and see where we, see if there's a common ground that everybody can live with and is happy with. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, trustee Caster?
I have one quick thing that, I'm actually, sorry to interrupt, based on, that I would like to look into a little bit more, based on what Bonnie said about insurance. I mean, maybe we should look into that before we proceed in any way.
Okay.
No concern about that for us. I mean, at the end of the day.
Are you saying that you're concerned that we have the proper coverage?
Right.
Okay, very good. That's absolutely something we should do.
Yeah, I would like to look into that.
Okay. Chris, do you care to comment? You don't have to.
No, I don't have anything. No, I'm just kidding. I got a couple of things. So I think if you're a member of the We Want Beach Club, I don't know if you care a whole lot of who runs it. You just want to be able to pay your fee, show up and enjoy the area. And so to me personally, whatever gets the residents and other members of the club the ability to show up and go swimming is paramount. And you want to do it at a fair price. You know, if the village was running this and it was able to cut the cost of membership down significantly, I think that, but I don't know if we're there yet. On Tinka's point, you know, my understanding is there's more insurance requirements for swimming than just our general liability. And a resident made this comment in a letter to us about risk. And, you know, it's nice to have that third party between the village and somebody who may get hurt. If somebody has a significant accident, we're second, we're not first to have to answer that when we're going up 30%. So I'd be curious to see what insurance rates will be with added coverage for the beach club of the village.
Right, right.
As well as, you know, potential for injury and other things. Plus now we're covering more employees, which is another thing. I'm all for shrinking the size of our government, not increasing it, adding more village employees. And third or fourth, wherever I'm at, we don't have a parks and recs department. We don't have somebody in charge of running this. So I'm not clear on how that would happen, which is probably why we have a village boat club as an organization and a We Want Beach Club as an organization, so that the burden, that administrative burden, isn't on the village employees who are in charge of taking care of all the village residents, not those who are particularly concerned about having a boat in the lake, Tuxedo Lake, or swimming at the beach. And then the next point is, you know, Siri told me that there are 98 days between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
Right.
The
That's accurate.
Beach Club is open. So there's a whole lot of time for anybody to use the park for free, which many, most municipalities have. I believe it's a code in the village. I'm not 100% sure, but I know it is in the town, that if you have a subdivision, if you don't have land for parks, you have to pay a fee, which I believe is $1,500, not that much. Basically, because you didn't provide a park for those new residents that you're bringing in. So, you know, it's our obligation to have a park for our residents. It's not our obligation to have a swimming hole for the residents. That's a special use that requires extra costs, and the people who want to use that need to have the burden of that cost. You know, bottom line is, there's a whole lot going on. I don't think residents deserve the right to swim for free, which is what you seem to be alluding to in some of your comments. I can't go put my kayak.
No, actually, no. I appreciate you bringing it up, but no, I wasn't alluding to that.
Okay, all right. But still, there should be a cost if we have to, if there's an additional burden for lifeguards.
Yeah, I do agree with that. I believe that, yeah, I do believe that too, yeah.
So all that being said, I think there's some analysis on the business case for the village running this. And I don't think we're there yet. And I think I'm happy to talk about it again, because users don't necessarily care who's running it.
Right.
And they certainly don't care if it's going to cost them less. I think that's what we should be striving for, and providing a better beach, if that's possible.
Right.
And I don't think I'm ready to move forward with the village running it until that business case is all laid out. Otherwise, if this isn't an emergency, I'd like to proceed as normal. Ability.
Yeah, no, those are all valid points. I think, you know, one of the quick contingency issues here is the club pays upwards to 7,000 a year in insurance. And if we only had to get a small supplemental package and saved a few thousand there, that's money that could immediately go to lowering membership or improvements. And I've noted a couple of the potential savings in looking at the financials. And we're in a much different position. We, as a village, you know, we can use income to make improvements. And that, you know, has its own momentum. You know, I would see this as a transition. If we were to take over the management, I would see it as a transition. I would think we would have to ask the members to be patient with a potential start date with disruption, because if we were going to be putting money into improving, there might be days when a part of the park was closed or cordoned off. It could be a little hectic. We could consider, you know, extending the hours potentially. And, you know, in the scenario I was looking at is, we would take that $30,000 membership fee from last year and as a starter, and then put in some of our own village funds. My position is, I would like to see a dual situation where we would work together with the We Want Beach Club and share responsibility, make, use it as a learning session for moving forward, and then analyze it at the end of the year, see where we succeeded and didn't succeed, and commit to putting another $5,000 or $10,000 into our budget now to make improvements. That would be a sweetener. But allow the, in fact, the We Want Beach Club doing the day-to-day, that means they would run the club, run the COVID, provide the management, provide the lifeguards. So there's really less liability for the village in terms of bringing on new employees to support. So that's the position I would like to get to, if possible. I think that the board has, there's five kind of diverse positions. I think maybe at this point, you know, the beach club had asked if they could liaison with one or two of our trustees. I think my position's clear. I thought maybe we could go around the table and see if we have any volunteers. Paul, potentially, maybe you want to? Paul, potentially, maybe you want to, you know, you had some questions. Maybe you want to lead the effort on behalf of the board to negotiate some of these things with the Wee Wa Beach Club as it is. And then we can also see if anything comes in on the donation, as Alan said, there's no clarity there yet. And then try and tie this thing up. I mean, you know, see if we can get a meeting of the minds. Do you have any thoughts on that, Paul?
Look, I'd I'd be, I I'd be happy to interact, but I but I think we, I think we have to leave today with sort of a sense of of, if we're gonna negotiate something, are we negotiating, you know, a license agreement that looks like something close to what we had last year and something close to what, you know, which is not all that different than what the, what the beach club has proposed as a current license agreement? Are we, are we attempting to negotiate something dramatically different? Former, you know, I I think we could, you know, we could probably get something, you know, in shape relatively quickly. If it's, if it's something else, I think we'll be, I I don't see that getting to a place where we'll have a.
Right. Well, it it's it's possible that the temperature's been lowered after today's discussion. Why don't you get together with whoever the beach club wants to represent their side? And let's just feel the waters come back, report to us, you know, in between the meeting. And then we can decide what direction we're gonna be pursuing.
Sure. So let's, 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 because things work best when we have a target date. So if we do that, let's have a, and we can always cancel it. Let's, I say, you know, a a meeting for a week from today or or nine from today so that, so that we're not.
Right. Oh, I would support that.
Can we, can we just, can we have a special meeting and maybe two back to back? Where one is the the next budget workshop? And then on top of that, the special meeting, the agenda would include, you know, the way ahead with the Wee Wa.
I'll throw that question over to our attorney, Brian. Are we allowed to have another budget workshop?
The board can have meetings on the budget until May 1st. Okay, just done with the public hearing, but the board itself can meet and discuss the budget and make changes.
Okay, so do the other board members agree with Chris that we should schedule a budget meeting, budget workshop?
Yep.
Yeah, I think they should. I I agree, it should dovetail and we just.
Okay, so, yeah, no, I do too. So say next Wednesday, we we do both. It would be a special meeting for the purpose of discussing the Wee Wa Beach Club and Fishing Club licensing agreements and preceded by a budget workshop.
Sure.
What time? Should we do it the other way around in case the workshop goes long?
Yeah, the other way around, I think.
Okay, so what time do you think we should set both?
10 a.m.
10 a.m. for which one, Alan?
Uh, sorry, we'll, we'll start with the the Wee Wa Beach Club and the Fishing Club.
And then what time do you want to start the budget workshop?
I can't, I can't do 10 a.m. on Wednesday. Actually, the days are killing me. I I actually have a day job.
Yes, so do I.
I don't know when you work, but.
Yeah, I.
You're, you're, you're doing all the mayor.
I have two full-time jobs.
I know, and I think you do more as a mayor.
Yes, I do.
So 10 doesn't work for me.
Okay, what works for you?
3 o'clock, 1,500?
That works for me.
Works for me.
Well.
Paul?
We love you, Chris, and we will accommodate you.
Well, I don't have to be there. You still have a quorum.
The one person we do need is, we need Paul's agreement since he's having the discussion.
That's true, but I I'm sure you would, you probably want to participate in the, in the budget workshop for sure, right, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, I know, definitely. I'm kidding. Of course I would be there.
3:45?
3:45, and I'm wondering whether, if need be, there's anyone still on the line from the board of the Wee Wa Beach Club who would be available at that time if necessary.
I can't book my schedule that far in advance. Not controlled by me.
Okay. I'm on too. I I didn't catch the date that you were suggesting.
We're referring to next Wednesday, Bonnie.
Um, I I think that works for me. Is that, you're saying 3 o'clock?
Uh, 3 o'clock to 3:45.
The Fishing Club is available also. This is Tom Fuller from 40 Circle Drive in Hamlet.
Oh, hey, Tom. Thanks for the correspondence.
Sure.
Uh, okay, great. I look forward to meeting you.
Yes.
Okay, so that's terrific. So why don't we do an hour then, from 3 to 4? And then 4 o'clock for the budget workshop? Uh, board?
That's fine.
Tinka, Chris, I mean, Tinka, Alan and Paul?
Sure, I would just characterize it as, you know, as meetings starting at 3 p.m. for those purposes so we don't get boxed into an hour for this or an hour for that.
Okay, Paul, you want to ring up the motion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Move to schedule a board of trustees special meeting at 3 p.m. on April 25th, 2022 for the purposes of discussions relating to the Wee Wa Beach Club license and the Fishing Club license and a further discussions relating to the 2122 budget.
Did, did you say 25th or 28th?
I said the 20.
You should have said 28th. I think you said 25th.
Yeah, that's what I think you said. So all that, but the 28th?
Yes.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terrific. Okay, so are there any other matters that any trustee would like to bring up before the board? Okay, we're going to enter executive session to discuss employee salaries litigation and employment of a particular person. And we will be back. If you want to stick around, there might be some resolutions following that. But I want to thank everybody that joined us tonight and really appreciate it.
Mayor, Eric, I apologize, but we, the near discussion.
Right. The last item was.
We deferred it from the budget up to.
Right, okay, I thought we were gonna have to go back. I thought we tabled it because we had to go back to AJ and get clarification, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's put it this way, we need additional information, so we can.
I mean, and I guess the target, Alan, thanks for bringing it up. I think the target would be by next Wednesday during our budget workshop. We better have information from him.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay, okay, all right. So, but especially to the Wee Wa Beach Club members for voicing their concerns and opinions. And it was very insightful. Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank the board for their hard work on the budget. We're continuing the process. We're gonna make it even better, hopefully, and we appreciate all your comments. So.
Mayor, one, one more comment before you make your motion?
Yes, sir.
Just with the, by my math, the budget, we have to approve it at that special meeting. We have to be all done, summed up, ready to vote to approve it because we don't have time to announce another special meeting before the May 1 deadline.
Terrific. So will there be a final vote, is what you're saying?
Yeah, or whatever changes we make become the budget on May 1st.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. So I move that the board of trustees exit the public meeting and enter the executive session to discuss employee salaries, litigation and employment of a particular person. May I have a second, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Elizabeth, take us on into a, to a breakout room. And thanks again to everyone, and you're welcome to stick around until we get out of our executive session to see if there's any other resolutions. Thank you very much.
This, this end of the meeting.
Oh, it's almost over. Oh, okay, then I'll wait downstairs.
I mean, it could take an hour, but it's almost over.
What time is?
You hope.